Good to see everybody. Got a pretty big crowd even this evening. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And be sure if you've got your cell phones, I better check myself, be sure that it's on silent or vibrate. I got, if the marshal will bring in the list, I'd appreciate it. Thank you so much. Pastor Greg Silesmore, good to see you again. We've had several meetings. Know your heart. I know your passion. And I know you're at Creekside Church. And hope you tell a little bit about that. I think you've been married for 26 years. Happy years, I hope, okay? They better be right. Got two kids, one boy, one girl. They're 19 and they're 17. Been in the ministry for 17 years. And planted Creekside Church at Burnt Hickory. And love to vacation and you love the beach. So how about honoring us in prayer and a pledge? And if y'all will stand, we'd appreciate it.
Say the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome. Thank y'all. Well, let's pray. Speaking about Psalm 121, says, "I lift my eyes to the hills; where does my help come from?" My help comes from the Lord, the maker of heaven and earth. And so Father, we just pray tonight that as we look to you for guidance, for wisdom, I was reminded when Solomon, that the king prayed for wisdom. That was a good request. And so God, I just pray for wisdom for everyone in the room. Pray that your Holy Spirit would just fill us up and give us exactly that, just to lead us, guide us in truth. I pray for this community, God, that you would be glorified in everything that we say and do this evening. And we're just honored and privileged to get to be here, to be a part of this meeting. And we just pray that your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much. I know y'all reviewed the minutes from the previous meeting. And I'd like a motion to adopt those minutes.
Motion to adopt.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. They are adopted. The first, we don't have any announcements, to my knowledge. Invited guests, we don't have any. I don't see any elected officials. So the first bid award, number two, action to approve the purchase of one Wilt loader. It's a Sandy 405K from Central Atlanta Tractor sale in the amount of $207,890. The loader will be purchased using the renewal and extension funds. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Caker, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. It's done. Let me get this note right here. Second would be action to authorize the chairman to enter to agreement with the Hogan Construction Group, Inc., to construct the new county fleet building, Hogan Construction, Inc. They were the low bidder, and the building will be built at 25 Industrial Way North at the old jail site. The total price for this construction is $4,430,000. Funding for this item will be allocated from the general fund. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Yes, turn the page. We don't have any departments or anybody on the agenda. So any reports from the committees or departments? We have none. Public participation in the agenda items? There are none. Consent items, action to approve the following consent items. Authorize the chairman to sign documents. I gotta do this. Oh, how seven, totally. Okay. There are seven of those, as you see them, as you could read them. Do I have a motion to accept? Mr. Dunn, did I hear you raise your hand?
Just a quick correction, Mr. Chairman, there's four consent items.
Yes, just numbered seven. There are four. You're right.
And yes, sir, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Galloway. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Old business, we have none. New business, do I read all of those?
Yes.
Action for the Board of Commissioners to approve the change order of $124,241 to the Highway 120 Booster Pump Station Design Modification Construction. The amount will be funded through the development agreement with Bremen Ventures located in Post One. I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Dunn, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
And next will be action to approve the settlement agreement and release in the case of Carnes and Garni Company, Inc., wherein Garni Company has agreed to pay all settlement costs of $60,000 on behalf of itself and the counter regarding the alleged sultation of the pond during the construction of the Richland Creek Reservoir Raw Water Pipeline construction by Garni Construction. I'll call for a motion. Do I have one?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Galloway, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Caker, all in favor? Would I?
Aye.
Next would be action to authorize the chairman to enter into a intergovernmental contract with the Paulding County Airport Authority regarding operation, maintenance, and funding for the Paulding Northwest Atlanta Airport for a one-year time period from July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2026, fiscal year of 2026. Airport is located in Post Two. Call for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Caker, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, was that you second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, approved. Next would be action to authorize the chairman to enter into a supplemental agreement with Kimley Horn for an additional $155,177.58 to finalize engineering design services for the Bobo Road at Maclan Road and Mount Taber Church Road project. Project is located in Post One. Funding will be sourced from SPOSS funds. Call for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Mr. Dunn. And second?
Second.
Ms. Galloway, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Next is action to adopt Resolution 2025-07, requesting the Board of Commissioners of Paulding County, Georgia approve the insurer, what's that word?
Issuance.
Issuance of revenue application, I'm tired, anticipation certificates by the Cobb County Kidstone Hospital Authority. I'm gonna call for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Galloway, how about a second?
Second.
Second. Ms. Caker, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Next is action to amend the general fund and the fire fund budget for fiscal year 2025. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Caker, second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Next is action to authorize the chairman to enter into an agreement with, according to Jock Construction, to remodel Fire Station Number One at 169 Thomas B. Murphy Drive. The total of the remodeling is the amount of $334,149.42. Do I have a motion on that one?
Motion to approve.
Mr. Dunn, and a second?
Second.
Mr. Snyder, all in favor?
Aye.
Next would be action to approve the revised intergovernmental agreement transfer tax partial 137.2.1.070.0000, the Heaping Hands partial in South Johnson Street Parking Lot to the City of Dallas for redevelopment purposes. Assigning the Heaping Hands lease to the City of Dallas and the city relocating Heaping Hands to a temporary location for 24 months for the continuation of the charitable service to the local community in conjunction with Dallas Downtown Development Authority. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Caker, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dunn, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is action to approve the water supply contract with the City of Dallas. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chair, before you get a motion, I did want to update the board that the terms that I mentioned this morning that were still being discussed, the proposal tonight after discussion with Dallas is that the map that was at issue be in place for a period of 10 years. The contract will still be 30 years, but the Dallas Water Service Area Map will last for 10 years. That's what the contract currently proposes.
Motion to approve.
Do what?
I'll put a motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Action to approve the water supply contract with the City of Dallas.
Next one.
The next one. Already done that one. Action to adopt Resolution 2025-09, confirming the executive session for the purpose of personnel. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Caker, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Action to approve the appointment of chairman, chairman's nominee Tabitha Pollard for the position of county manager. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Caker, a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Next is...
Chairman, which one seconded that motion?
Virginia.
Virginia?
Keith did at the same time. It doesn't matter. Mayor Keith. Choose one.
Galloway.
Okay.
I need to speak out.
A little louder. Action, the next would be the action to approve the appointment of chairman's nominee, John Grant, to the position of Communication Director. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Caker, do, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder? Have a motion to, is it now time to motion to close this meeting?
Unless people have, anybody has any announcements, like Ms. Caker?
Oh, okay. Four announcements. You got one?
I've got two, actually. Number one, I wanted to welcome Nate, our new airport director for the Paulding County Airport. Thanks for coming both this morning and this afternoon. Love seeing your face up here. You can see what's going on with us and we know what's going on with you. So, thank you for coming. Also, let's see here. I need to wish somebody a happy birthday. I wonder who has a birthday in the house?
Well, I want to give flowers to one of Paulding County's favorite people, Ms. Peggy.
And while he's giving flowers, I would like to read a little something about Ms. Peggy, which I call her Aunt Peggy. So Peggy Caruth Wills was born on March 25th. I'm telling Aunt Peggy, do you mind?
No.
1935 to John and Josie Caruth in Dallas, Georgia. After graduating Dallas High School in 1953, where she was a member of the Dallas High Chorus Club?
Chorus group.
Okay. And cheerleader. Peggy married Lauren Wills on August 17th, 1956, almost 69 years ago. And congratulations for that. That, woo. A devoted Christian since the age of 11, she is a charter member of Grace Covenant Presbyterian Church, where she co-founded the women's ministry and served as president for many years. She retired from the Georgia Power Company after 30 years of service. She was appointed to the Paulding County Board of Elections in 2007. She served as chair of the board through 2024 and remains on the board today. Peggy was also named Paulding County Citizen of the Year in 2022. She is passionate about her faith, her family, her friends, and her community. She is committed to being the best wife to her husband, Uncle Lauren, and the best aunt to her nephew Boyd that she can be. Happy birthday, Aunt Peggy.
Thank you.
And she's lived in Paulding County all her life.
And I am very blessed. God has blessed me and blessed Lauren. And we also have Lee in our lives and, and we are most grateful for him. I don't know how you're supposed to act when you're nine years old, so what you see is what you get.
And the contribution you've done to this county and the work that you've put into it has been very appreciated. Thank you Peggy. It's good to get to know you as a personal friend. So thanks for everything you've done for me and my family. I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn this session. Do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.